There's one over there.
Call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, ever and ever.
Thank you. Move on to the approval of the minutes of the meetings held July 27th and August 5th. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion of second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or same sign, motion carries. Persons wishing to address the board? We have, I believe, five, yes, five people total. Three against and two for agenda topics. So each person will get five minutes tonight. So we will start on, there's no non-agenda topic people, so we'll start with the agenda topic people. First, I will ask Madison Howard if you would come up and state your name and address. And then after you state that, we'll start the clock. And Carly will put up a little card for one minute and 30 seconds to help let you know when your time's running out, if that's okay.
Perfect. Alright, so my name is Madison Howard. I live at 6201 West Osgo Circle, Sioux Falls. Alright, so there are more people wearing masks in here than last time, so I'm hoping these meetings are starting to do something good. But I'm a recent graduate of the Sioux Falls School District, and I still have a younger sibling attending the next few years. The district has always told me and my family that their top priority is protecting health and safety of students and their staff. However, in the face of a deadly global pandemic that has killed 700,000 people and 150 people just in South Dakota, mostly of us being in Sioux Falls, the district has decided to employ a plan with several disastrous elements guaranteed to spread COVID in the schools that you are all responsible for. First, the face-to-face instruction. The CDC Director, Dr. Robert Rayfield, said if communities have a 5% positivity rate, then schools should not open. And Dr. Birx from the Federal COVID Task Force agreed, saying in areas where we see widespread case increasing, we need to stop the cases and then we can talk about safely reopening. But as of yesterday, Minnehaha was at a 14% positivity rate, and Lincoln was almost at 9%. That's well over 5%. And secondly, 100% capacity in schools is problematic. There is no attempt in this plan to reduce class sizes, stagger the passing periods, or keep students away from each other to stop the spread. And lastly, giving no effort to reduce the number of students in the building, the worst element is the no mask requirement. Changing the phrase from strongly encouraged to expected is just not enough. Despite comments previously made at these meetings, the research is not mixed on masks. To quote a recent letter from our President Trump, he said that wearing a mask is something we should all do when we're able to, especially when social distancing may be hard. And here's why we need to give masks a shot. This is the passing period at Roosevelt High School. Cut that in half, you still can't stay six feet apart. Cut it in third, you still can't stay six feet apart. You touch everyone in the hallway. Everyone. If anyone like to see his picture, they can, but... You can see there's no possible way to social distance, which is true not only at RHS but every other high school. I was a peer mentor at Oscar Howe. When I went through an elementary school, the tables that sat four people now sit eight at the same size table. There's no way to properly social distance at any of the schools in the Sioux Falls School District. Looking at the districts with similar size and a similar plan, if we enable this plan and go back to school, the school will be shut down within nine days. Knowing all of this, if you pass this plan as is, you will be sending students and teachers into your own version of The Hunger Games. Learning will be constantly disrupted by the continuous rotation of students and teachers not being able to come to school due to close exposure or infected with COVID. Students can't learn if they're sick, and teachers can't educate if they're on a ventilator. Who's going to be the one to tell the students that the kid who sits next to them in English class isn't coming back? Or their favorite teacher they saw last week is being hospitalized? Or their beloved counselor is dead? In my mind, even just one preventable death is far too many. It's time for the school board to do better. Because if one student gets sick, or if one teacher becomes hospitalized, that responsibility falls entirely on all of you. Thank you.
Next, we have Cheryl Johnson. Please state your name and address. And you will have five minutes as well, and Carly will have the indicator.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Johnson. My address is 6640 West Thatcher Drive. First, I want to thank you all for serving on the school board. I know you've got hard decisions, and no matter what you do, people are going to be angry. So I appreciate you going into public service. I've been an EA at Roosevelt for 10 years. I'm also running for office this fall, so I've been out talking to voters for the last eight weeks. And I've been asking this issue for a lot of parents. And what I'm hearing is overwhelmingly, everybody wants to go back to school. I don't think any of us doubted that. But they want to go back safely because they don't want to have to shut down and go back to online learning again. I think our school district did an amazing job transferring to online learning with very little notice, but it was still very disruptive for the kids, the teachers, and the parents. Especially those parents where both of them worked outside jobs. And so they are concerned, and they're saying, you know what? If my kid has to wear a mask, if you mandate masks, our kids will wear a mask because they don't want to have to shut down again. I also go to work at Roosevelt, and there is no way to safely social distance in that school. We have 2,400 kids in a building. That's larger than a lot of our towns in South Dakota. While expecting masks is an improvement, I still feel masks should be mandated. Those who don't want to wear them can learn virtually. I think we owe it to our teachers, our staff, and our kids to protect them the best we can. I believe it's better to start off the year with strict safety measures than regret not doing so later on. We are not teaching children. We are teaching future adults. And I think it's okay for kids to learn that the world doesn't revolve around them and their rights, and that sometimes as citizens, we have to do things for the greater good. We have to do things like wear masks when we don't want to, because it will help protect our fellow citizens. One of my daughters taught in Japan for two years, and over there, the use of masks is very common. Kids and staff and parents wear them regularly. But then again, they have a culture where they consider their fellow citizen, and they all work together for the common good. We have had too many leaders take a hands-off approach on this issue. We need you to be leaders. We are lacking. And be responsible and help people realize the seriousness of this pandemic. Wouldn't you rather err on the side of safety, of being overly cautious than not cautious enough? Another thing, please use your influence to get better testing. Instead of having to quarantine for 14 days and using up all your sick leave, if we could get people to be tested around day two or three, if they're negative, they can go back to work. They save their sick days, we don't stress our supply of substitutes. I know that's something that not a lot of people mention, but I think that's something we really need to focus on. We want schools to open, we want schools to stay open. Please mandate masks to give us another tool to help us prevent the spread of the virus. We can't stay open if our teachers and staff get sick. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. And last, Jennifer Gabor. There she is. Like, I hope she's not outside this time. Thank you, state your name and address.
Jennifer Gabor, 6432 West 56th Street. I'm coming from the same place as those two. I'm at Roosevelt High School. And I heard the latest number was over 2,600. So it keeps getting bigger. And I want to focus in on that word "expect," because that's the improvement you gave us. And it is an improvement, but it's truly not enough. The bottom line is, we expect many things. I personally expect things from you, but we as educators expect many things. We expect communication that's coming to us before it's coming to the community. That hasn't been happening lately, and it's been very frustrating for all of us. Because parents are coming to us and saying, well, what do you know about this? And we're like, what? We expect to be treated like professionals, and that goes right with that communication. You really do expect that we learn from what's happening in Georgia, and Mississippi, and Indiana. They've made mistakes. They're already going back to remote learning because they've already got spread happening. What's the rush in jumping in and putting all of us in those buildings? Are we just waiting to find the numbers and see how fast they go up? We expect not to bury our students and our colleagues. I don't want to do that, and we know you don't want us to do that. I've had to do that in the past. It's not a pleasant experience. We expect to not be an afterthought, but to be the top priority. If we don't take care of what's going on in schools, we're affecting this entire community. There is not one part of this community that's not affected by students in school. We expect to know, you to know that our concerns are real. And we expect you to know that we want this best for all of us. This isn't just about teachers, this is about our students, this is about our kids, and your kids. I heard just yesterday from a parent that found out that her child had been exposed, took the child to get tested, positive. He's in football, he's going to connections. And she just got an email today from somebody that said, well, why'd you get him tested? Why did you bother? Didn't have any symptoms. Because I figured that was probably the best thing they could do. Well, I guess I wouldn't have. That's the mentality we're living with. We've got parents out there who are like, yeah, my kid was exposed, but I'm not going to get him tested, I'm going to send him back to school. How many hundreds of students are we going to then expose? We've got to do better than this. We expect to be valued. We expect the science to be followed, not the politics. And to stand up for those who don't believe this virus is real, or who don't want to be bothered by a mask or anything like that. This is about how many people will be in my classroom? I can't get this kind of distance. Won't even come close. even come close. We expect to have the CDC guidelines for a safe working environment. And what happens when we run out of supply? What happens when we can't clean and we can't eat those exposures off? We need that true leadership from all of you, and from all these people around the outer sides. We need to know that if there's truly local control here, or if there's somebody from higher up that's telling you all that this is what you have to do. We've heard rumors that Brookings has been told, you can't do your hybrid model. And they're being told that from the state. If that's what's happening, let us know that. Be honest with us. We need transparency above all things. We need to know that you trust us as professionals to tell us what's going on. And frankly, we need to be able to spend time with our high-risk family members. I've already told my mother I won't see her when school starts. We need well-defined thresholds. We don't even know what's it going to take. Where's that line for us to go remote? Where's that line for us to come back? 14%? We're 9% over what the CDC is saying even opens the doors. We need to be respected. Ultimately, what we need and what we expect is for you not to open these doors to put us and our children in harm's way until we meet those CDC guidelines to do so. And then, only when you're going to require masks. Up until a few hours ago, my daughter was not coming to Sioux Falls School, because it was not going to be safe for her. I had a friend reach out, and she will be doing virtual academy at a friend's house, so I can be at work every day. So we have to do better. We have to know that we're taking care of everyone. And yes, I'm getting emotional, because this is personal for all of us. Please, please, do better.
Next is Alexa Beckstrom. Beckstrom, I'm sorry, I couldn't read the R there. Thank you. And please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Alexa Beckstrom, 5705 West Green Drive, Sioux Falls. I have two points. The first one is about the survey that you sent out to parents, asking if parents wanted masks to be required or strongly encouraged. And my problem is that you didn't have an option for parents who don't want them at all. You only had options so that you could get the answer that you wanted, which was masks. And for all the parents who are not okay with masks, who are very uncomfortable with it, who have a lot of concerns, there was no option for us to say anything. So when the survey results came out, at 51% wanting them mandated and 49% wanting them encouraged, that shows that 100% of parents in Sioux Falls want their kids wearing masks. And I find that very hard to believe, because you did not give anyone the option to disagree with you. The second one is about masks in general, and with kids going back to school wearing them, my concerns with that are, by covering half your face, you're not going to know who any of the kids in your school are. It's going to be a complete guessing game every single day for those teachers. And with 20, 30, 40 students in their classroom, they are not going to have any idea who their kids are. You are also making the kids sick. You are weakening their immune systems. And when they do get sick, they will be more seriously sick, because they won't have the antibodies to fight off the sickness anymore. And lastly, I think that by having everyone wear masks, you are causing serious mental and psychological harm to those kids, because they're not going to see anyone's faces, especially young kids. I took my daughter to our church's nursery yesterday, and all of the helpers were wearing masks. And she was completely freaked out, because they looked like monsters. So I think there's going to be some real repercussions with all of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexa. And Joy Howe is our last speaker. Do you state your name and address?
My name is Joy Howe, and I live at 1500 North Oak Ridge Place, Sioux Falls. And I wanted to bring up the survey also. I read the Argus Leader article two weeks ago, which showed that 51% of parents wanted face coverings, and 49% wanted them strongly recommended. And I got a copy of the survey. Those were the only two options. There was no option for parents who say, I do not want my children to wear a mask at all in school. No option. So it looks like 100% of the parents in Sioux Falls want their children to wear masks, which I find shocking. And based on this survey, then it's not so shocking, because the survey was written to get the results wanted. There is no option for saying, I do not want my child to wear a mask at all, which I find not very honest, a little coercive. Makes it look like if you don't want your child to wear a mask, you're the only one, the only one out there who doesn't want their child to wear a mask. So I think the results of the survey are deceitful. And I just wanted to make you aware of that. Also, people are bringing up, you know, we need to do what the CDC tells us to do. CDC is not a government agency. We don't have to obey the CDC. The CDC's main job is to get vaccines out there. And if everybody wearing masks, your immune system is dropping into the toilet, and when a real germ comes around, you've got nothing to fight them. These kids all going back to school, wearing masks all summer, they're going to get sick. It's not from the virus. It's from having no immune system from wearing a mask all the time, which is very bad for you. And also, on the CDC's website, it says that the chances of a school-aged child getting the virus and dying of it is one in a million. And we are shutting down schools for a one-in-a-million chance of death. Beyond ridiculous. Do your research. I can't believe we're even having this discussion. One in 1 million. So let's take all of Minnesota, all of South Dakota, North Dakota, Iowa, and maybe a child will die. One child. But they're basically saying it's like zero. And we're discussing this? It's crazy. Absolutely crazy.
Thank you, Joy. That is it for public input. We will move on to approval of the agenda. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose sign. Motion carries. On to the Good News Report, Deanne. Thank you.
I just realized, I wanted to put a loop on my PowerPoint, and I didn't. So I'll have to stand here and do some clicking, see if I can do two things at once. Good evening. As you know, in a normal year, the first few weeks before school starts is always hectic yet exciting. Add the elements of a global pandemic, and it turns out, we really didn't even know what the definition of exciting was or hectic. Well, it doesn't matter. Wants to play nice here today. Giving some backup. Oh, perfect. All you need to do is have the Director of IT come up, and then things start to work, right? So my apologies. We're talking about the beginning of school being exciting yet hectic. Last Thursday, we stopped by at a couple of schools with our camera to find out what's happening as staff prepare for the return of students. And we know there are many, many questions out there. But we hope some of these pictures that we've captured show some of the ways in which the Sioux Falls School District is preparing to educate amid the coronavirus. Sioux Falls School District staff, most of whom haven't even been back on contract yet, some of whom just returned to us in the middle of last week, are busily preparing for the start of another school year. They're truly stepping up this year, even getting to the point where they're using brooms to clean the steps and scrub them down. Summer deliveries are often stored in one central location, and until they can be divvied up into classrooms, the stacks of boxes include things like cleaning supplies, spray bottles, face shields this year. Custodians are always taking pride in their cleanliness of the buildings, but again, their work is even more focused and purposeful this summer. Our supply closets are brimming with hand sanitizer, wipes, Kleenex, and the like. Administrators are making rounds into the classrooms to measure, figure, and then measure some more, so that dividers can be made to keep students and staff safe. Some of the fun furniture went out, and desks are being spread apart to the extent possible, so we can have classroom configurations similar to this. Trainings like the Read 180 Intervention Trainings are taking place in the school, but with hand sanitizer very close nearby. And, gosh, those brave and beautiful souls we call bus drivers, they are doing their part too, masking up and making it feel normal for kiddos who were leaving their last day of summer school at Bridges. And you can tell behind that mask that that kiddo is smiling. He was so happy to have his picture taken. And there's a great EA on the bus who is happily greeting students as well. And we end with a very poignant message on a classroom bulletin board, reminding us that a growth mindset can be especially helpful at times like these. That message is a little hard to read, but it says, instead of this is too hard, this will take some effort and will take some time. That's growth mindset. And instead of I can't, I'm going to train myself to do it. So two schools, about a total of 30 minutes at each location, and those are just some of the things we saw happening out and about, and wanted to give our community a chance to see inside those buildings and inside those classrooms as to how things are happening in such an unusual year. Any questions?
No, I happen to be at, Bridges was being hosted at Susan B. Anthony this summer due to construction, so I got the opportunity to see some of the kids and staff there. And they were just so excited to be back in person. Safe parameters, obviously, but being back and be able to have that communion together and community effort together. So it was really exciting to see. So, yeah.
Some of them were not happy that it was the last day of their summer program. They were feeling like they were expected to be there and happy to be there. And we know that some of our kiddos need that stability and that safety of a welcoming environment on each school day. So there were a couple of kiddos that would have rather been there up until the start of the school year, but still great to see the smiling faces and all the work that our staff is doing.
And it was great to have, kind of with less students and staff, practice runs in some of the buildings to see what is going to work and what is not going to work when we start on August 27.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
On to Conflicts of Interest. First, 7A, administrators were brought forward. Do you have a motion to approve the conflicts of interest of administrators?
So moved.
Have a motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose sign. That motion carries. On to Conflicts of Interest, Board Member Parker. Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
With one abstention, Board Member Parker. On to Consent Agenda, Item 8A through D. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion is second by Parker and Baker. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose sign. That motion carries. On to Consent Agenda, 9A, Just Claims to Sanford Health. Do you have a motion to approve?
Back, back.
Have a motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose sign. That passes with two abstentions, Board Member Ryder and Board Member Mickelson. On to 10A, Return to Learning Update, Athletics and Activities.
We have a couple updates tonight. I believe Casey Malle is first. One of the things that we are now kind of extending our planning into is our athletics and activities, and trying to think about how we allow kids to participate in the events that they love the most, and do so in some different ways, as well as having to consider the community participation aspect of that. So we'll give you an overview, and that information is now being added to the complete document.
Good evening. Before we begin, I'll just point your attention to a study that was done at the University of Wisconsin School of Medicine this summer, since the school closures that happened in the spring for adolescent children in the state of Wisconsin, just showed the impact that the school closures had and the benefits of being active and involved in adolescent children. So when we really started this, this was one of the things that we looked at. And we all know the benefits it had, and our students involved in our activities within the Sioux Falls School District. So it was a guiding force in helping us determine what we needed to do. And as we looked at it, we worked with our local city, state, and national officials to develop these guidelines and protocols. And hopefully, our ultimate goal was to provide a safe opportunity for our kids to come back, to be involved in our activities within the Sioux Falls School District. But ultimately, our primary goal is to start and continue, and hopefully, end traditional learning in the Sioux Falls School District. And we want to do everything that we can with the guidance and protocols that we gave our coaches and our directors, to do everything we can to help assist in that goal. As I mentioned, we worked with our city, state, and local officials. And one of the guidance that we received was from our National Federation of High School Activities and our South Dakota High School Activities Association. In those plans, they recommended a tiered approach to returning back to play. And we modeled our approach after that. So we will give you a little bit of a recap on the tiered approaches that we have within the Sioux Falls School District and what we suggested. But our ultimate goal on this was, when this whole thing started in March, the CDC came out with mass gathering recommendations. So it went to this number, then it went to this number, and then it finally came down to no mass gatherings. And our goal in this is if the Department of Health or those officials come to us, can we operate in this way? And hopefully, get our activities, and really look our students in the eye and say, you know what, we gave you every opportunity to do the activities that you love within the Sioux Falls School District, and these are the options that we have in front of us. So right now, I asked Dr. Boyd Perkins to come up and give a little tiered summary on the fine arts, and then I'll give a tiered summary on the athletics, and then our recommendation to you for approval.
Good evening. You can see that Tier 1 at the top is no practice and no events. That'd be no practice outside of the school day, and any of our outside activities, or no large gathering events. I'm going to go ahead and take a step forward here. Hopefully, I'll get the right button. There we go. Tier 2 is, we would be having practice and events, but they would be under specific guidelines. And as we get into these performances, at this level, there would be no audience allowed at our performances, but they would be recorded and then broadcast online for people to watch in that regard. And any social distancing that's done in the classroom is also done in the performance of the students. Some of those could be recorded right in the classroom and broadcast online. Now, Tier 3, which is what we're at right now, will mean that in terms of our fine arts activities, which we have different venue sizes throughout the school district, and they're all, with the exception of marching band, they are all indoor performance facilities. The capacity will be figured out, and then tickets issued to students based on the number of seats allowed in that facility. of seats allowed in that facility. So there's social distancing for families, and then students would be performing also in their social distance setup like they have in their classroom. For example, in a normal year, it would not be uncommon to have 150 students on stage. Well, we won't be doing that anymore. We'll be having broken down like they are in their classroom, and they'll be spread out on the stage as they perform. And then when they're done performing, we'll bring in the next set, and we'll have them perform for the next set of parents like that. We'll distribute tickets equitably to those families as equitably as we can, based on the amount of seating that we have at the event. If there are tickets left over, then we can have students come in and use those tickets. And then tier four, we're still going to use our, even though it is considered business as usual, we're still going to be using our social distancing in those performances, and we'll just hold true to that and make sure that those are maintained throughout, unless we get an all-clear on everything. But at this point, tier four is scheduled for that. I should also point out that parents will be encouraged to watch online versions of these performances as well. We're not able to do live perform, live broadcasting in every event we have. We just don't have the number of employees and equipment to do that, but we can get video of everything that we do, and we can send that out to parents so they can watch. That's what I have.
I'll recap the athletics portion of the tiers that we have recommended for you guys. Tier one is the same thing. It would be no, no practices, no events. Our tier two, basically, it would have the essential needs of the activity, so that would be the students participating, the students participating, coaches, event staff workers, but there would be no fans being able to attend at the tier two level, and we would have the limited travel, and that would be no overnight trips until the postseason prohibited. Our tier three, we would keep that same limited travel. In talking to our medical providers, they thought it would be a good idea, and it really didn't have too much of an impact on our schedules. We have, the schedules that we have, and a lot of that, to be real honest with you, is being dictated by the states around us. Minnesota with the decisions that they've made recently, North, North Dakota is actually saying no out-of-state travel right now, and actually, when I was coming in here, I heard that Nebraska might be doing the same thing. So that's a, it's a constant evaluation of our activities, and that's kind of what it's going to be all year. But that just gives you a little bit of a flavor of what it might be and look like this, this year in our activities. But at, at the adult spectators, it would be a limited spectator for the athletics, and what we would do at ticketed athletic events, so that would be volleyball, football, and soccer. When we host soccer at Howard Woodfield, we would limit it to four tickets per participated on the roster, and that would be both home and away at the event. We would allow all students in, and what we would do is promote our, our adults within the Sioux Falls School District. We were offering them a $20 pass. They can, they can have the option to buy or not, and four of them would cost $80. That's, for a volleyball season, we have 10 home matches. It's, it's less than what they would be spending if they paid $5 admission to those events. We're not trying to break the bank, but we're also trying to help with some of the finances that we have with running our events. The, the away would be the same way. They would have the option to do four, and what that would be is a permit. So we reevaluated that. It wouldn't be a pass. A pass in some ways to get a pass into the game. We would allow, permit them to buy admittance at the ticket table. So if you do that, you look at that, what we're doing is reducing our home fans from that transaction at the ticket gate, but the only transactions that we have are with our visiting fans. So we're reducing that traffic at our ticket gate, hopefully helping our event staff workers that we have. Middle school is going to be a little bit different. Look, our facilities aren't quite as big as our high school facilities, so what we decided there is, is two dot, or two tickets per participant, and there's no charge to that. We don't charge at our middle school activities, but what we're, we're really trying to do is just limit the, the attendance and try and be able to adhere to the COVID guidelines that are set. Student attendance, high school student athletes will be able to attend as many as we can get into the game, and they would need to buy an activity pass. So again, we're encouraging them to buy an activity pass to limit that transaction. If they can't afford one, we'll encourage them to talk to their activities principal or principal, and we'll make sure that we, we try and accommodate those students as best as we possibly can if they, if they have those needs. One of the things, if you have an elementary-age student, middle-school-aged student, or a younger student, they have to be included in one of those four spectator passes. What we're really, we're not trying to punish families, but what we're trying to do is limit that attendance size and do what we think is safe for our students to have those activities. So they, unfortunately, the elementary or middle-school-aged students or anyone younger would have to be included in those spectator passes. That's kind of that. And then the middle school, I already kind of talked about in the, with the adult, and at the middle school, it's the same thing. If, if the elementary or younger-aged students want to come, or middle-school-aged students want to come, they'd have to be a part of those spectator passes. And then when we go to tier four, we're, we're back as normal, and that's ultimately the goal that we would like to get back to at some point. But with a tier three recommendation to the school board, we feel like we're doing our part in trying to stay in that traditional learn, mode of learning in, in the Sioux Falls School District. Any questions for myself or Dr. Boyd Perkins?
And for the public, we had a work session last Wednesday where we asked a lot of questions and had more detail and so forth. So if you have any further, if there might be some of those questions asked, you can go back and watch that video as well. But just, one thing we asked is that on the new Metro Conference is to maybe have that tiered level posted on there so the public and families know what level we always are at. You know, right now, we're starting the school year at tier three, you know, and if things change, when we make those changes in protocols, that it's there so people can know where to go look and see what tiered level we will be at at that time.
I just wanted to put a plug in for the new athletic website, too. I spent a lot of time on it this weekend after asking a bunch of questions, and it is a huge improvement over what we've had in the past. And so I would really encourage people, and maybe, I don't know if DN, we can get a plug out there on social media just to get the site out there, but it would be super helpful. There's a link on there that has all the live streams for the different schools that we play routinely. And so if you have a grandparent or a relative who maybe would normally come to a game but can't, or isn't going to come to Sioux Falls because they're out of town or even out of state, super easy to just click on that link and be able to see the game and feel like they're still supporting students. So please do check that out. There's a lot of great information on it. So I wanted to put a plug in for, for that as well. I know a lot of time and effort went into that, and I think this year will be a really good kind of run of how, how much we need that site for people, so.
If I could just make one last comment, just with our, our families and our stakeholders within the Sioux Falls School District, I just ask that if you are, if your son or daughter is involved in our activities, just constantly be ready for that communication that we're going to probably have on a weekly basis, because there's going to be a lot of communities that are probably in the same situation as the Sioux Falls schools. It may be four passes, it may be six passes, those may be changing weekly and constantly. So if you are, just be ready to get an email from your coach or your activities principal in that communication, and just be ready to be, you know, handle a little adversity and get through this. We'll get through it together, and, and we're trying to do the best that we possibly can to provide these activities for our students. So if you get that email, and it's a day or two before the game, we're trying our best that we possibly can to make sure that they're communicated with as best as we can. So just be ready for those type of situations, because all communities will be different.
I just want to uplift that today was the first day for many of the activities to get kicked off here for the Sioux Falls School District. And so our support goes out to those athletes and those musicians and performers and coaches and directors and fans and parents in keeping all of us safe. And certainly, there is no perfect solution, but we do know COVID is here to stay. And during these times of uncertainty, it's so easy to operate under fear and anger and have political plays, but we know all of us has a role to play. And you did a nice job on putting together through your procedures and guidelines, really a playbook or a playbill, if you will, for the district. And it really has allowed us to, to move forward with that trust and understanding and flexibility, knowing that how things look today will continue to evolve as that data continues to come, come in. So the return to play is certainly evokes feelings of encouragement as well as just hopeful thoughts, and I guess we're ready to play, so to speak. So thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to acknowledge the return to learning update on athletics and activities?
So moved.
I have a motion in second to acknowledge the return to learning update athletics and activities. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Now to the Fall 2020 Hiring Update. Becky Dormin. Thank you.
All right, it's there. All right, great. Good evening. You see up on, on your screens, our newest recruitment class, those are our new teachers that will be walking in on August 14th. Just kidding, although, you know, after doing this for 20 years, it does feel like that when I'm looking out across the crowd, I'm like, wow. No, but it is an exciting time in the Sioux Falls School District. The reason why it's exciting is twofold. The folks in HR are breathing a sigh of relief. We're almost there. We've almost made it, and our schools are looking forward to welcoming all these new staff. So it really is fun right now. We, right now at this point, have hired 116 new teachers. When I looked back at my data from last year, this board report was two weeks later. So I think our numbers are, I know that our numbers are going to creep up a little bit. This year, it looks like middle school is the winning level with hiring the most staff, which would make sense, because we did see a lot of growth in, in students at the middle school level, moving up from the elementary. And like in years past, about half of the teachers that we are welcoming to our classrooms are new to the profession. So it's, it's a very exciting time for them. We have staff where 70% have less than five years of experience, and 80% are from South Dakota. This points directly to our lineup of instructional coaches, that makes them so imperative, knowing that we traditionally hire professionals that are new to this teaching field. When they say, "You just got to get your foot in the door," that's what this slide is all about. 37% of the teachers that we hired coming aboard worked for us in some capacity last year. Most of them were substitute teachers, and some came from the ranks of education assistants. We've also hired specialists, clerical, and employment contract staff, as well as some part-time staff and coaches into our classrooms for next year. And here's our history lesson on hiring. As I had mentioned previously, we're sitting at 116 new teachers. I believe we will surpass probably last year's number, just, just by a little bit, looking ahead at what, what could be coming yet. And our five-year average of new teachers is 141. Looking at 1617, you're probably wondering what happened there. We had a, a lot of growth at the elementary level as far as some specialized teaching. We had growth at the special ed area. We hired in admin interns, which pulled teachers from our classroom. So we had a number of things happen for that hiring season that really increased the number of new hires in 1617. Again, looking back, you can see that we typically hire staff that have less than five years of experience, which makes sense compared to our applicant pool is a relatively non-veteran teaching staff applicant pool. Additionally, 25% or 24% of the folks we hired for this year have master's degrees coming to us, which is an interesting number to think about, because our average is 65% of our teachers that we currently have have master's degrees. So you can see, once they get in our classrooms, they do seek out those advanced degrees, which I think is a testament to the area and as far as making education opportunities available and to incentivize teachers to go for that master's degree, continuing that thought of being that lifelong learner. So far, we have hired 35 support staff. If you were to look on the Sioux Falls School District website right now, we have 27 support staff, which would be like education assistants and specialists posted, and we have a need for 250 substitutes. Our recruitment efforts, especially this year, keyed on social media, the district's website, and I can say, the HR department, we spent a lot more time on the phone talking to applicants, because we missed that opportunity for that face-to-face. Right before we left the classroom in mid-March, we were able to sneak in a couple job fairs and had a meet and greet here at IPC. So that was, that was nice. We got into some of that face-to-face time, that networking. But programs such as early contracts, where we would offer an early contract to a, to promising student teachers, since we weren't here in the fourth quarter, that didn't work out like it typically has. And then also, our teacher internship program may have been impacted some, because we missed out on that whole fourth quarter of getting to watch people in the classroom. Our applicant pool had 824 teacher applications in it. 77% of those folks were from South Dakota, and then almost 90% are from the Midwest. And their average years of experience is just under seven. Looking ahead, you can see that we've steadily kept just above 800 teacher applications in the past three years. This is certainly not a number we want to see decline any lower. And you might think, wow, 800, that, that's a great number. But when you think about, we probably, we share these applicants with the rest of the Midwest. Certainly, school districts around us, but then I would say, anybody within a 200-mile radius, we're sharing these applicants. So that never goes quite as far as you think it does. We do have just a little bit of work remaining. We're working on filling our virtual academy teachers. When I talked to Dr. Zeke today, it looks like we may need at least 20 virtual academy teachers. They have been doing hiring and working on that. We still have a need for a couple special ed teachers and a middle school and high school teacher as well. That concludes the Fall Update. Are there any questions?
No, thank you, Becky. I just, thank you for including that update with the teacher pathway program and the prepared-to-teach program, because I think that's so important in our district to, I truly believe, I hope some of those children in that first picture become teachers in our district and that we can grow them here and, you know, increase our diversity as, of our staff by using our students that are in our school and show them what great opportunities they can have working for this, for our school district. So the, and what I found interesting as well as, you know, as that number of the pools decreased, I asked you nationally if that's also the trend, and you did confirm that. You know, I always say, you can't assume, you need to ask that question. So it, it's a problem nationwide. Basically, the pools of applicants of teachers is decreasing, so we need to keep on top of that by trying to make our workplace a good place for people to work, as well as to encourage people to look at this as a field to enter as well. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I think as we face so many changes this year, it's hard to know what the future holds, even in what education would look like. And, you know, we're looking to hire 20-something virtual academy teachers, and who's to say that that's not a, a long-term idea that we have in our district, that we do offer the option of online? I mean, it's hard to say, and so you might have candidates who, maybe they don't, maybe the classroom isn't for them, but they're really tech savvy and they can really engage kids online, and they find a different passion, or, you know, I just think that there's... Or, you know, I just think that there's so many moving parts right now and we don't really know what the future holds. And so maybe tapping into some of these different things will get us additional applicants that maybe we wouldn't have had prior to. So having gone to a lot of job fairs in the past, I know that they are very important because you really get a sense for who somebody is when you're talking to them. And so not having that and then thinking about putting that person in front of a classroom full of twenty to thirty kids, that's a really big missing piece. And so I'm glad you were able to get a few in. And I'm sure that, you know, in talking to people, you can get a lot through either Zoom or whatever other applications were used to kind of substitute for that too. But excited to have kids back in the building and we have some very excited teachers too. So hoping for a great year. Thank you.
Thank you. Great.
Thank you.
If there are no more questions, I ask that you acknowledge the Fall 2020 Hiring Report.
Thank you. Do you have a motion to acknowledge?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor of the acknowledgement signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed same sign. The report is acknowledged. Thank you, Becky.
President Mickelson, I'll just make a comment as Mr. Knudsen is coming up for his report. I was talking with some of our partners in higher ed over the last couple of weeks. And, you know, we talk about the short-term and long-term effects of the closure and not bringing kids back. The, our partners in higher ed are thinking about the same things we are. How do we do this? How do we keep things going? And one of the comments they made was imagine a year without a class of graduates going into the workforce. And you think about a year of lost teachers, a year of lost nurses, a year of lost business people or any of the professions that come from both four-year and two-year schools and from our high schools, straight into the workforce of the military. So, you know, we're all thinking about this in kind of the here and now, but we also have to think about those long-term trajectory, things that happen if we aren't able to try to keep walking forward in some way. And even with athletics and activities, we think about our students who are hoping to do their activity at a collegiate level and the opportunity to play in this year and what that means to their future scholarships and opportunities that are lifelong kinds of things. So, you know, we have to think very big picture. And I think the personnel report is just an example. When you look at those numbers, if you slice off, you know, a few hundred off of that, what does that look like to our workforce over time? So I just wanted to put that in. I think it's something we have to think about. And now on to the Technology Report.
All right, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to provide the details regarding the 2020-2023 Technology Plan. Tonight's report covers the three sections and twelve goals encompassed within the Technology Planning Committee's proposal. This plan represents goals specific to helping to achieve the district's strategic planning, specifically addressing the fiscal accountability systems and management goals. Although developed over the course of the last year, some changes were made in response to COVID-19 and the prep for this next school year. The district will use this plan to guide projects and decisions made over the next three years. Guidance in these initiatives will ensure that technology is safe for student use, support district learning goals, and encourage innovative teaching and learning. Although technology plans are no longer mandated in order to receive federal E-rate dollars or a requirement of the Department of Education, we continue to find this to be an important process. I first want to point out a structural difference between the proposed 2020-2023 Technology Plan and the previous 2018-2020 Plan. This plan moves us from a two-year tech plan to a three-year plan. This change allows us to more fully incorporate larger district initiatives from the initiation stage through completion. Another change to this plan is the structure of the document. This plan groups our goals into three distinct sections. Instructional Technology Digital Learning and Support, District Systems and Business Intelligence, and Infrastructure and Security. Instructional Technology references technology that is implemented in the classroom and has direct instructional benefit. District Systems references central administrative tasks and software, such as student records and reporting. And Infrastructure and Security references the wired, wireless, and security infrastructure that are the foundation that support the two prior. Grouping these goals and strategies identify the importance of the relationship one section has on another. The Technology Plan is funded through the capital outlay budget. The projected capital outlay budget throughout this tech plan is for FY21, six million one hundred and sixteen thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. And FY22 through FY24 is four point five million dollars per year. There are two separate funds within the capital outlay, the Audio-Video Technology Fund. There's a planned expenditure in FY21 of two point one million dollars for the Interactive Display Panel Project and one million dollars every year after through FY24. The Wireless Infrastructure Fund has a planned expenditure in FY21 of one point nine million and again in FY22 of two point one million for replacement of the wired and wireless network across our district. And then the ongoing capital outlay dollars are the replenishment of that fund for that six-year cycle. The Sioux Falls School District is opening new high school and middle school for the upcoming 2021 school year. These building projects will incorporate technology standards found throughout this technology plan, including wired and wireless infrastructure, interactive display panels, classroom Chromebooks, teacher laptops, and printers totaling one million eight hundred and fifty thousand eight hundred dollars over the current fiscal year. The first section titled Instructional Technology Digital Learning and Support recommends the following six goals. The first goal I want to highlight is the coordination between ITS and curriculum through collaborative curriculum studies. Curriculum studies identify changes to the methodology for instruction. ITS's involvement in these processes better align our curriculum goals with our technology initiatives. We will accomplish this by the strategy of participation in these studies and by having our technology integration support to train the trainers during curriculum adoption and implementation. I've combined the goals, the remaining two through six goals within this section because they outline a significant technology strategy directly impacting the classroom. Several of these items are influenced by our remote learning experience this spring. They include the following: expansion of the learning management systems, kindergarten through first grade one-to-one iPad initiative, teacher mobile device and internet connectivity project, interactive display project, and the yearly reoccurring classroom and SAP technology budget. These will work together to significantly push our technology forward in our classrooms. The expansion of the learning management systems has been a key tool during remote learning. Learning management systems such as CSOW at the elementary level, Schoology at middle school, and Google Classroom at the high school level provide central locations for technology-based learning. A key strategy is to automate teacher workload by a direct connection back to our student record system. Grades entered into Schoology will automatically show back up in infinite campus. This will simplify teacher workload and more quickly inform parents and students of their progress. We'll leverage these tools in and out of the classroom through their expanded use. Our one-to-one iPad initiative will bring technology to the hands of each of our kindergarten and first grade students. During remote learning, having one-to-one technology for each of our students is a significant benefit to education. Outside of remote learning, these same devices are leveraged in the classroom through innovative teaching methodologies and interactive virtual presentations. The district will order, acquire, configure, and distribute these devices to each student this school year. The devices will be paired with a protective case and our mobile device management system will be licensed for the additional devices. This commitment will join our device replacement rotation so the district can refresh this equipment on the same schedule as the other one-to-one devices, the Chromebooks and the other levels. With the iPads in K-1, they'll last through two cycles because of the life span of that device. Additionally, we'll begin to outfit each teacher with a laptop. After careful consideration regarding the best use of our technology investment, we have found that providing a laptop to each teacher gives us the flexibility for teaching to happen from anywhere and will prepare our teachers to engage with technologies such as interactive display panels in creative ways. We'll begin this process by adding to the existing inventory of teacher laptops. Our FY21 purchase will include enough laptops to outfit one-fifth of our teachers. The remaining devices will be purchased as classroom desktop sets are set to expire. The bulk of those expire in about two years. We have combined this with the goal of bringing connectivity to all of our students. Bridging the connectivity gap in our student population is an important goal. Remote learning has quickened the pace by which we intend to solve our district's student connectivity issue. Throughout remote learning, we track those students who are struggling to have reliable connectivity. Many staff went above and beyond to rectify connectivity issues for our students. We are setting the goal of one hundred percent connectivity for all of our students. Significant work has been accomplished by partnering with the city of Sioux Falls, local internet providers, and other technology solutions such as hotspots. We intend to leverage public Wi-Fi access federally-funded low-cost internet connectivity through localized IPs and the purchase of these hotspots to achieve full connectivity. Another goal in our classrooms is the full adoption of the next-generation technology at the front of the classroom, our Interactive Display Project. The district has leveraged smart boards successfully in our classrooms for many years. Technology has advanced beyond the projector and interactive display panels will provide a wide variety of teaching opportunities for our teachers to leverage. This next-generation technology will provide a level of flexibility simply not achieved through our existing smart board implementation. An RFP will be created this fall and installation of interactive display panels will begin in our new high school and middle school, along with select other buildings in FY21. The final goal for this section is the ongoing investment in Chromebooks and equipment for our larger one-to-one initiative. The success of our existing one-to-one initiative is clear and its importance highlighted by recent events. Our intention is to continue to commit dollars to this initiative as demonstrated in previous tech plans. The second section is District Systems and Business Intelligence. And in there, we recommend four goals. The Reporting Systems, the Implementation of a Digital Records Project, District Systems Technology Budget Roadmap, and the Creation, Maintenance, Review, and Updating of District Policies. Our district continues to grow in scope and scale. We are producing significant volumes of data and it gets more challenging to provide meaningful information to our decision-makers. In order to provide consistent and useful information, we are enhancing our ability to create dashboards and reports through the use of Tableau and leveraging other reporting tools. Examples of the work that can be accomplished through this product was on display with the Boundaries Project. This expansion will bring additional license to the product and extend the reach of how we leverage those dashboards. We'll be able to actually license all the way down to the teacher level, which gives us the opportunity to actually create dashboards per room if we ever get to that point. So it allows a lot of flexibility in that regard. Additionally, we're working to implement digital records for the reduction of paper as well as the smoothing of internal processes in order to bill requests of our external entities and families with quick and efficient service. This project obviously will reduce our paper footprint while increasing the speed and flexibility by which we achieve our daily work. It will also work to remove multiple file cabinets of student documentation into an easy-access single system. If you were to tour some of our buildings, I'm sure you've seen the rows of file cabinets and this project should hopefully eliminate those. We'll also continue to contract for software used across the district, including Microsoft Office, Google, and other key district-wide software. Our last goal is the continued process by which we create, maintain, and update district policies. This goal continues to be an important part of each subsequent technology plan. The final section covers the infrastructure and security needed to support the above initiatives through the final two goals. Those two goals are the Infrastructure and Security Technology Budget Roadmap and the ITS Security Initiative Project. Annually, we look to refresh our hardware, allowing for growth of services and maintenance of existing applications. As a growing and expanding district, we annually need to add additional services and replace existing equipment to maintain a robust and dynamic learning environment. Further, all of the goals mentioned tonight include an aspect of security. We are embarking on several security initiatives over the next three fiscal years that will look to strengthen our protection of our valuable student and financial information. Drawing on resources already on staff, we'll be identifying risks, training our staff, and monitoring our systems. The Technology Plan for the Sioux Falls School District is an important guidestone for achieving robust and intentional instruction through the use of technology. And these twelve goals prepare the next three years to be key in continuing to move forward the district as a whole. I ask that the board approve the report of the district's 2020-2023 Technology Plan, and I stand by for questions.
Thank you, Ryan, and thanks for a lot of those clarifications because I'm not a tech person. So it really helped me understand this report better. First of all, I think it's great we've gone now from a two-year to a three-year plan because it helps us going forward to better provide for the district and so forth and know what we have coming up the pike and so forth. With all that we're ordering and with the new schools and so forth, availability of computers and hardware and all that, is it looking like we should be okay or?
Right, that's a good question. So supply lines are a challenge right now. We do have several of our orders this summer that are being delayed. We've received half our shipment of Chromebooks that will be here and implemented prior to the start of school and then the other half will be arriving post the first day. So what we've done is we've utilized our outgoing equipment in order to make sure that on day one, everyone has a device. Our iPad initiative was ordered later in the summer and the ship date for that is right before the first day of school. So we don't anticipate those devices being on-site until then. But what we've done is we've utilized older equipment and our earlier summer purchase in order to get that equipment in place. And we've achieved one-to-one across all but ten schools. And those ten elementaries have more devices this year than last year. So we're looking to also use some of the outgoing equipment to bolster that before the first day of school and achieve one-to-one as well there. In terms of the new buildings, I think our timelines are okay for those just yet. We're hoping to, very early in the fall, make a fair amount of those purchases so that the network and the wireless and some of those interactive displays and such are in place before the start of school. Network is usually pretty important early in a building's construction because of the monitoring systems are sometimes the first things that need to be connected. So we're looking to move on that, please.
Thank you.
I love the goal of getting a hundred percent of our kids' connectivity. I mean, we know that that is a struggle for a lot of families. So I really love it. That's going to be a priority for us. What, do you have an idea what percentage was last spring, about how many kids?
So the percentage of internet connectivity or the gap in connectivity for the city is roughly fifteen percent. And I, I don't have the number on the top of my head, but I know that we were slightly below that. So we're in slightly better shape than the city as a whole, but still way too high, especially based on the type of learning that we went into in March. So the work in that space is really threefold. Public Wi-Fi and working with the city to expand free wireless for the community, but also the local ISPs and providing low cost. There's some programs that, not only did we have, I think, nine hundred students impacted by signing up for that service, but to date, none of them have been disconnected. So those have carried through to the fall and we're hoping that continues as well. Outside of the federally-funded one, there is about a fourteen-dollar-a-month low-cost internet option out there, which for some folks is too high. And for some folks that maybe don't have address stability, doesn't work as well either. So the hotspots that we've purchased, in very much a pilot sense right now to see how they work, are able to be applied to those students who maybe aren't located in one spot or unable to take advantage of those particular ISP home rooms.
What's amazing about that is that won't only help for remote or hybrid, but it's just for the daily homework for those students that we can help. So it's such an important factor. And we have had great partners. I know Dr. Knowles, you worked with Midco and SDN and so forth during, when we first went into remote learning to make sure that our students had it. So thank you to those partners in our community as well for helping us.
Absolutely stepped up.
I was just going to say, you know, back when, back when I was in school and we had, you know, dry erase boards were a really big deal and we didn't have smart boards. And now we've had smart boards for a long time. And so I'm excited to see what is being replaced and how, because I've seen some teachers be very innovative with smart boards. And so when you think about the level of technology that has continued to advance, not that we had old stuff, we had stuff that was, you know, worked very well. But now imagining what that next thing is going to look like, I think, is really exciting and hopefully engaging for students. I'm sure in some budgets somewhere, we have professional development for how to use that because that's a big piece of giving somebody a piece of technology is helping them to know how to use it the best that they can. So I'm excited to see what that looks like. And then the other thing I just wanted to comment on, you can never be too careful with the security pieces of that and, you know, whether it's stolen identities or stolen personal information or other data breaches. It's so important. And then also the speed, you know, as we have more and more people in our buildings, which hopefully will be reducing again. But everyone trying to get on that same network tends to bog things down. So when you do have so many things online, whether it's an online textbook or an assignment that they're supposed to read, it's not helpful if they can't get on and download something to get from, you know, page to page. So I think those are all important things to being effective and efficient with our learning if we are going to do a lot of things online, to not have delays like that that teachers then get frustrated and kind of pulls them away from that technology piece of it because it's just easier to hand something out.
Right, and that was the theory of those sections as well, to make sure that infrastructure and security is a foundational piece that supports those other things.
Yeah, so good. Thank you very much. Good report.
No other questions? Do I have a motion to acknowledge the Technology Plan Report?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed same sign. I'd like to take a point of privilege. I think we have a special guest here. I'm looking at you, Bobby. Board Member Parker, would you like to introduce our guest?
Oh my gosh, sorry. Well, he loves the stage, so he's probably thrilled with us. This is my son Bobby. He's twelve. He'll be seventh grader at Edison. He's in the Spanish immersion program. And he just wanted to come and see what school boarding was like. He's been to some before, but he was younger, much younger, so. So, so yeah, he's just here to see what this is all about.
Take it all in.
Where does mom go every other week?
That's awesome. Welcome, Bobby. Say nothing. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. We are adjourned.